The city clerk on January eighth, two thousand twenty-one. The Asbury Park School System, School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skill and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society. Rule call, please, Mr. Hastings.
So, Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Breach. Ms. Cook. Mr. Grillo.
Here.
Mr. Lauteraka.
Here.
Mr. Remi. Mr. Saunders.
Here.
Ms. Lozinski.
Here.
Ms. Atien.
Here. May we please stand for the flag. Opening to the public participation part of this. Do we have any presentations?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Okay, we'll go to that first.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, board and community. This evening, the Department of Curriculum Instruction led by Mr. Edwin Ruiz and the curriculum and instruction supervisors will be presenting the Advanced Education Program, which is will be our district gifted and talented program from grades three through six, which will lead into our seven and eight Dream Scholar Program, which will support our Dream Academy Program, which is nine through twelve. So with that being said, I'd like to introduce our supervisors as well as Mr. Ruiz. So, ladies. So this evening, we have with us Dr. Lauren Jackson, Ms. Janice Kropowski, Dr. Sandra Minuskin, our newest supervisor, Ms. Charlene Pinto, and one of our veteran teachers, Ms. and supervisor, Ms. Kimmy Taylor.
There we go. Good evening, board members and community. Thank you for joining us tonight here for this presentation that we're going to provide you today about our advanced education programming that we are embarking on this year in Asbury Park. I wanted to introduce my team, but Dr. Adams stole my thunder a little bit, but I'm going to say a little something about each of these people because I think it's important for you to know who they are. I'm going to start from my, from my left to, to, to the right, Dr. Sandra Minuskin, who is, all, all of the supervisors you see up here are considered supervisors of curriculum instruction, but they also have specialties. I think it's important for you to know who they are. Dr. Sandra Minuskin, among other many talents, is our science lead and supervisor for science and has done an amazing job this year of making sure that our sciences are represented throughout the all grade levels. Ms. Pinto, who has just joined us as part of our team, as Dr. Adams said, is working with our special services department, with our special education students, and she has been an amazing addition to the team. Of course, we all know Ms. Kimmy Taylor. She is a phenomenal educator who has been not only overseeing a lot of our intervention programs, but also has led the charge for writing, among other things, in the district. Very appreciative of her work. Right next to her is Ms. Janice Kropowski, who is in charge, among other things, world languages, ESL, bilingual education, the humanities, the arts. Any of those programs are usually involved. Ms. Janice Kropowski is along with, along with our CTE program. She's generally in charge of what goes on at the high school. And, and going back again, Ms. Kimmy Taylor is my supervisor over the upper elementary school as well. And then we have Dr. Lauren Jackson, who is in charge of our early childhood department and covers grades pre-K to two, including third grade as well, because they're all in the same building. And we all work very closely together. I'm very proud of this team. And of course, Ms. Anna Graff, who is not here with us tonight, is also a member of our team, and she focuses on mathematics. So without further ado, I'm going to start the, the program for you guys. And as you can see, we've just placed a really quick program overview. Part of the reason that we wanted to go and start this program is that we've been focused so heavily on trying to bring our kids up from a deficit. And we know how important that is. But I think we're at a point now where we can start looking at where do we take our students to that next level. And we have a lot of capable students. In all the years I've been here, we've always had students who required more and could do more. And so as part of this process, we decided to work on a program, as we like to call it, a gifted and talented program, called the Advanced Education Program, that's going to be implemented in grades three to twelve. It's an enrichment-based program, and it aims to provide students learning opportunities that focus on these three pillars here. Creating a teaching and learning environment that embraces student strengths and allows mistakes to overcome challenges. Supporting teaching and learning with student background knowledge. And providing project-based challenges rooted in relevant, real-life key concepts. The key for us is to allow our students, to give our students the support that they need, but also we want to support our staff members as well. I think if, in order to raise our students up, we have to raise our staff as well. All these things working together are going to cau- cause us to have a very strong and successful program. But without further ado, I'm going to have my supervisors kind of walk you through the rest of the program today.
Good evening, everyone. Program specifics. What does that mean? Well, what it, what it is not is repetition, working through curriculum faster, using the learner as a tutor. What it is is teacher as a coach. Being creative, project-based learning, research to determine both questions and answers, which is problem-solving, and enrichment in core subjects, math, reading, science, and social studies.
So the objectives of the program basically are to provide enrichment opportunities for students in the lower grades, because we know where our students are in the upper grades. We know that we have a successful Dream Academy, and we know we have a successful Dream Scholar Program that feeds into the Dream Academy. So part of the objective is to provide a rigorous and relevant academic enriching experience for lower-grade students. So the program criteria really looks at many different benchmarks. Of course, we want to know what the lexile of the student, lexile level of the students are, among the other bullet points that you see here. One of the important part of the Dream Academy admission process is a student interview. And we wanted to make sure that those types of components that students are exposed to in later grades are included in with families and students in the younger grades to provide continuity throughout the continuum. New Jersey does not have specific standards for gifted and talented students. However, the National Association of Gifted Children does. And the New Jersey Department of Education has accepted these standards as they align with New Jersey Student Learning Standards. And we drew upon the six standards found from the National Association of Gifted Children as we worked collaboratively to create the Advanced Education Program. Now, in the Dream Academy, this is freshman year. The Brookdale courses, the dual enrollment courses are highlighted in yellow. And you can see that in the first year, the freshman year, it's a very slow start, as students have to make that leap from being eighth graders to now being high school-level students. That transition is very important. Fast forward to junior year. All of the Brookdale classes are highlighted in yellow. This is a dramatic transition for students from sophomore to junior year. In the summer of sophomore year, students are to pass the Accuplacer math and ELA test in order to continue along in this path. So the Dream Scholars are designed to prepare students for the highlighted yellow portion that you just saw, and we do that in several ways. We begin community collaborations that are significant in the areas of civics, in global studies, in social justice areas, through project-based learning.
Okay, three to six Advanced Education Program. I just want to say I'm in constant collaboration with Dr. Jackson, because she oversees grade three, and they will be participating as well. But I want to bring your attention to this schedule. As you can see, periods five and six are dedicated to two blocks. This is one of Dr. Adams' criteria, so the students who are in the program can have more enrichment and intervention during the day.
So, following along with a similar path, if you see, and you're going to get a little more details as we flow through these slides. But here's a, a sample of what we're looking at, as you can see on top. You see basic, you see core, you see advanced, kind of going through the continuum of how do we take a concept or a standard and take it from its baseline, core, and then even more advanced. One of the skills that we're really focused on is number sense. We talk about it all the time, because our students, in order to be able to do mathematical concepts that are more complicated, they have to have a true sense of number sense. I should be able to go like this, and they should know that's five. They shouldn't have to count their fingers. That's number sense. That's on the most basic level. Students should be able to know that if I do this, that's the number five. That's part of number sense. So this kind of takes you to the continuum. The way it's broken up here is third grade goes across, fourth grade, and then fifth grade. So it just kind of gives you an example. I don't, I don't need you guys to read all of that, but it gives you an idea.
As you know, we started a brand-new science program this year, and the program's HMH, and we have been, this slide shows the differentiation and what we're specializing in, in the advanced core and the basic areas. In the program this year, we plan to infuse more mathematics in the concepts, so that it helps with the mathematics, the building of the mathematics this year. Can we have the next slide? And in this next slide, you see we're in dark bold. The, the program offers more resources in advance. The bold is what they, they offer in each area.
So as a team, we want to offer an equal opportunity for all of our students to participate in the Advanced Education Program. That includes our students classified for special education and related services. Over the next three years, a percentage of classified students, grades K to twelve, exposed to grade-level curriculum in a general education setting, will increase by thirty percent. So our yearly targeted goal is ten percent increase, and what that means is providing our classified students with access to a Gen Ed curriculum. The steps we're taking as a team to ensure this is accomplished is professional development for our child study team members, special education staff. IEP placement decisions will be closely monitored, and academic data will be used to closely monitor instructional effectiveness. So we're using assessment data to drive curriculum and instruction.
We've walked you through the concepts for instructional components in the classroom for all grades, starting at grade nine through twelve with the Dream Academy, going to seven and eight with Dream Scholars, and then, of course, the three to six Advanced Education Program. But how, as a collective unit, as an organization, are we going to evaluate the program to ensure its efficacy, fidelity, and effectiveness with and for our students? As Ms. Kropowski said in a previous slide, we are going to continually compare analysis of district benchmark data, think HMH testing, Lincoln testing, et cetera. Additionally, we are going to infuse our district report cards. As everyone is aware, we are continuously in the process of reworking report cards to be standards-based. We are going to continuously create student portfolios to ensure that PBL component that we've all spoken to in the previous slides, and that students are getting rigorous and relevant content instruction in the AE program. Additionally, we have also included student, teacher, and family surveys and feedback from that to take that more qualitative piece from the stakeholders themselves, to really evaluate how the program is doing, where it is, and where we need to go in the future. And lastly, program walkthroughs through our leadership walkthroughs with Dr. Adams and continual program walkthroughs through the Office of Curriculum and Instruction. Sustainability. We've evaluated it, we've implemented it, but how are we going to ensure its long-term effectiveness and existence in the school district? It will be supported through eventually, not right away, as we are just rolling this out, but long-term goal action steps, a student mentoring program, the continual infusion and reinforcement of our social-emotional concepts that are reinforced through the Office of Student Services, family-focused groups, taking that data from those interviews and survey feedback, and really honing in on what our family, students, and community members are saying about the program itself, targeted professional learning opportunities for staff involved with the AE program, and of course, consistent updates, adjustments, and revisions to our curriculum, whether as an internal decision or as put through from the New Jersey Department of Education. And with that, do you have any questions for us?
So before we take any questions, I just want to add, and I appreciate, I just want to thank this, this amazing group of educators that we have standing in front of us who worked really hard on this, but more importantly, have implemented this. This is not, we're not showing this to you to tell you what we're going to do. We put this up there to tell you what we're already doing. I want to say a special thank you to Dr. Adams for really putting us in a position to be able to do this. It's his vision, his leadership that's really helped us hone this down and make this what it is. And I really want to say thank you to him and his job, just appreciate his leadership and his guidance on this. And with that, we're ready. If you guys have any questions for us, we're, we're here. Yes, Mr. Lauteraka?
If, if I can just confirm that, uh, grades three to six, there would be two of the periods for those that are in gifted, talented, each day, that will address gifted and talented methodologies, as you presented it. Is that, is that correct?
That's part of it. So it's, it's a part of a whole. So we've identified the students. We've told, we've already spoken to the teachers as well, which of the students and which cohort of students have our gift, are our AE students. Those students, when they go to math, will have a more rigorous math class. When they go to language arts, they'll have a more rigorous language arts class. And it's, and when they go to enrichment, most students, usually in that block, are going to intervention. Those students will go to an intervention period that's really more focused on enriching, as opposed to trying to mitigate some deficiencies. We're actually looking to push them during that, that period, that block.
So as a practical matter, are, are they, for, for not the two intervention periods, are they being grouped separately for a higher-level math, for a higher?
That is correct.
Okay. And then just my other question was, I'm a little vague with regard to grades. Seven and eight, I see as critical grades in preparation for the Dream Academy, and how the gifted and talented methodology plays into certain curricular issues that have to be addressed in seven and eight in preparation for the academy?
Sure, and now, one of those critical issues definitely is algebra. Algebra, we believe, and, and we know, needs to be taught in eighth grade in order for those principles to be practiced and understood by the students in the upper grades, when it comes time to not just Accuplacer testing, but really SAT testing or any other examination that the students need to, to complete. So algebra is a key to the Dream Scholar Program.
So that would perhaps take precedence over some other gifted and talented methodologies at those two grade levels? I, I'm just not sure how it's all meshing together at seven and eight.
So what we did when we devised the AE program was, we looked at the end goal, and we started to work backwards. So we know the end goal is the associate's degree in the high school diploma. And how do we get there? And at each grade level, what do we need to do to ensure that the students build upon? So we worked in backward design, actually, to make sure that students had a rigorous ELA option and component in grade seven and eight, as well as in mathematics, because those are the two really tested core, and how science can support the math, and how social studies, civics, then can support ELA. We took a critical look at how those two disciplines could support the core in those grade levels through a backward design. I'm not sure if I answered your question.
I think the key piece is that the academies drove this, drove this discussion, right? We were looking at how do we make sure our students coming up, going into those academies, are prepared. The Accuplacer, which is a big, big test that our students have to take when they go to Brookdale, has been a challenge for us. And part of that challenge has been not being able to do algebra in eighth grade. They need those concepts. They need to know how to do those things. That's why I went back to number sense earlier. We need to get those basic concepts back, push our students so that when they come up and they go into the academies, they are prepared. And we can, they can take those courses sooner and finish sooner. That's another thing. We, we end up doing a lot of remediation. And so we want to be able to have our students come, enjoy the, the process of learning, being on a college campus, and having success. And you can only do that if you prepare them from the beginning. So we got it, so that's where, that's the aim. That was the, the focus, started from the top. We looked at the top, and we said, let's work our way down and make sure that we have all the supports in place, so that our students, when they get to that point, they're ready to rock and roll.
Well, I don't, well, I do have a question. I am happy that you guys are addressing the Accuplacer concerns, because that was even my concerns with, with students that were going to four-year schools. Like, some of our top students were failing the placement test and having to take the remedial courses in college. So I'm glad that we're, we're addressing that now. Additionally, are there opportunities for students that are not, are not identified at the beginning of the school year and be, and do well, you know, maybe first and second semester, to now be pushed up into the, to that program to, on the different grade levels?
Yes, there is. I'll, I'll let Janice touch on it, but you know, we also have other opportunities for students for college credit. So I'll let her kind of talk a little bit more about that, but yes, there'll be other opportunities.
Uh, yeah, absolutely. And you know, how I see it in my mind is, there's fluidity in the program, and that, we all know every student learns differently. We all know all of our students are talented in some way. So to make sure that the special education student population, as well as the ELL population, are all represented and given an opportunity to make their way in or out of the program, depending on, you know, their achievement.
Thank you.
I just, if I may, I just wanted to say that I'm very pleased that you're working to at the lower grades, so that those children that, you know, just need a little extra to keep them involved in, you know, their studies and move forward, that's going to change the trajectory of our curriculum if things start moving up in that direction. By the time of high school, high schools will look different for them.
Hi. I have a few questions. First, do we have an idea of the number of students that's going to be in the first cohort of, of advanced ed?
Yeah. We don't have the number of third grade. Think of a third grade class of about fifteen to twenty students in each building. So we're talking about two buildings.
Yeah.
Third grade class of fifteen to twenty students, yeah.
Okay.
Because of the pandemic, the pa, the data wasn't as, 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 as rich as we would have liked.
Sure.
We're going to work through it with the students that we have.
No, that's great. The other question had to do, so I, I saw the Dream Academy, the students learn Mandarin Chinese, which is fantastic. What world languages? But then I saw throughout the rest, what are the world languages that, that advanced ed could be able to, to take? I mean, I know we have Spanish and French. Is it just a continuation or enrichment on, on Spanish and French?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then I also saw that, so you, you want a, a specific percentage of the special education students, thirty percent, to be kind of put into general education? Are there specific subjects that, that are, would, that they would get kind of put into that would make it an easier transition? And what other supports are there for them if we see that it's not, maybe not working out?
So for them to access a general education curriculum, that can look like many different ways. So pull-out resource is what we offer when we take a student out of the classroom and offer supplemental instruction. So our goal is to not offer a replacement instruction, just a supplemental, so they're able to sit for the regular education, general education instruction of the day with their peers, and then be pulled out for supplemental instruction to kind of catch them up on that gap that they've missed out on. So they still will continue to have the support of a special education teacher and a general education teacher.
Right.
Sometimes also a power support. So we're not looking to move our students just into a general education setting without the supports. What we want to do is make sure they have access to the Gen Ed curriculum with supplemental help.
That's great. And I saw that you have the Amistad curriculum in there, which is something that a few people have come by the past couple of months to, to discuss with you, Edwin. So that's great to see. And then with science, this is the, kind of a cool thing, is what I noticed over there with your curriculum is, it's kind of what has been mandated by the, by the state and by the, the Murphy administration in terms of, I don't know if everybody knows, but New Jersey is the first state with which climate change education, implementing climate change education into the curriculum is mandated. And I'm wondering if that's part of it, or is, and has there been thought of that implementation in the other subjects too?
Yeah, we've had to redo our curriculum, K to twelve, and we're continuing to, as you, as you know and approve it, have to infuse the climate change requirement. So yes, the answer is yes.
And that starts as early as, as?
As K.
As K.
K.
Okay, right.
K to twelve.
Sweet. Okay.
So if I might add, today, Dr. Jack from Princeton Hydro was able to come and meet with the Engineering Three students regarding the Wesley Deal and Sunset Lake projects. Which was a tremendously rich presentation, and the students were riveted for the entire forty-five-minute presentation. So not necessarily climate change, but environmental justice nonetheless. So it is infused then in engineering.
Sweet. That's great. Great to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Thank you, team.
Dr. Adams, do you have a presentation?
That concludes my presentation, ma'am.
Now we're to the public participation part of our meeting. Please come to the podium, announce your name, your address, and you have three minutes for your comment and or question.
Ma'am, your microphone is not on.
Ms. Brazil. Can you call me to the mic? No, no, I can't hear you. I can't hear you, Sheila.
Hold on. My kid's probably here, but you don't need to. It's, it's not me, it's him. Sheila Brazil, twelve hundred Jefferson Street, Ashbury Park. I told you I'd be back. That was a good presentation by Talented, Gifted, but they said we had that years ago, when my son was over here, which he would be thirty in October, and, but he took algebra at the middle school way back in two thousand and something. So I don't know why, because he and him take, I think, calculus his last year at the high school. So that's good to hear that back, but she'll be orbiting, you know, all students, I think, because they do need their math and stuff. And then, speaking of- And then, um, speaking of the Talented, Gifted, are y'all going to bring back cursive, the curriculum, back to the curriculum? Because it was taken out. My daughter is 17 years old. She did not learn how to write cursive when she was in third grade. I had to go out and buy the little tablets that had the cursive writing on it. So I think they need to come back to the curriculum for the kids to learn. Because the, the excuse was that people doing stuff on the computer these days, well, they cannot sign a check. When they get paid, you had need a signature on the check. It's not valid endorsed until you have to endorse it. It's not valid. That's so, we need to bring the curriculum back in. Another thing about the food, that was my first question I had, but I did, um, because my daughter, I was under the impression, and my daughter also under the impression that she cannot bring her own food from her, from home into the school. So you need a sense of clarification up to each school about that, because she's at the high school. So, because from my understanding, kids do not want to eat lunch at the high school now because a student found a, a roach in his chicken sandwich. So a lot of kids not eating lunch. So my daughter called me, telling me she's starving. If I gotta go pull her out of school every day, I would do that and make sure my child have some food to eat, since if she can't bring her own food in there, not from Dunkin' Donuts, some food I cook at home. So I cook almost every day. And then, um, do we have a supervisor of guidance? Two guidance counselors left the high school last year. And, uh, my daughter was in the engineering program, but I guess this has been her third engineering three. I guess she got kicked out or something. Well, not kicked out because she passed class, but they put her in band. She's a cheerleader. She cannot cheer and play in the band at the same time, and she's never been in band. Maybe when she was in the middle school. So I think if we have a supervisor of guidance, they need to get on top of it because a lot of people, kids are not getting their, um, the class they need, credits they need to graduate from school. They put them in a, she said, it lasts from 206 to 333. She have, um, planning, literacy, planning or something. She's sitting in the library for an hour, over an hour, doing nothing. So she don't even, don't get credit for the class. So I think that'll need to be looked in, because I don't know, like I say, back in younger years, when I was in this school, because I got there from Ashbury in '82, we had a director supervisor of guidance and we also had one when my son was at school.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil.
They need to look into that. Thank you so much. Have a blessed night. God bless you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sean Hamilton. I live at 84 Creek Road in Keansburg. Um, I am a classroom teacher here for 22 years. I'm standing here today as a majority member, majority representative of the Ashbury Park Education Association, where I've been involved for 22 years and I'm currently treasurer. Madam Board President, Policy Board, Board Policy 4282 is one of the many policies all staff was adhered to. This specific policy is in regard to social media, you know, the do's and don'ts. If you don't have copies, I, I have two copies. Sorry, my printer's 50 bucks a cartridge for ink, so, um, I'll put them over here if you don't have it there and everything. Please take note of numbers one through nine. I utilize social media and I'm very careful about what I post in public. Recently, our acting superintendent made a tweet that basically called out a blogger who had been writing disparaging articles about the school district. I'm sure you've all seen him. Dr. Adams sent out a tweet with white clown faces making accusations of racism toward the staff. I find this insulting and inappropriate and most importantly, conduct unbecoming. Will the board take any action? Because we as staff are held accountable for our social media posts and so should the acting superintendent. Please be mindful that this was posted on the public district website, which makes it even more disturbing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Rogers Sewell, Avenue. Uh, I want to address a couple of things. Uh, one was a scheduling issue. That was brought up on a, a community meeting and, you know, I don't want to give my, my background and history. I came from a corporate entity, management for 15 years. We've done scheduling. When you do scheduling.
Mr. Rogers, could you speak up just a little bit so we can hear you?
When we've done scheduling, uh, we have software bases that know how to input amount of number of classes and students. I know most good, schools go through this and I'm understanding there's a big basis on scheduling, uh, or issue with scheduling because of overcrowding. I don't know why this isn't being addressed as quickly as possible. Number two, a lot of questions got answered, asked today that are questions that should be addressed to many of the parents that can't be here on a regular basis. One was the, uh, issue that Joe Grillo brought up was these computers, uh, how, what's the maintenance issues, how to deal with it? I mean, we got it, we have to have counseling issues on the internet, someone does this, we can do that, we can put out more information. So we have a lot of ways of getting information out that parents don't get. Number two, I know New Jersey Education did a learning loss analysis. What was that report? And we're going into this Talented and Gifted, where are we standing with the learning loss that was done and how are we preparing these kids for this next step into the things that we want to do? Because we already know we're, we're way behind. My last issue, uh, and I'm very upset, uh, I'm, I'm supporting a, a great project in Newark called Newark Kids Code. And right now, we have 3D printers, we have laptops, we're working with Bloomfield College and NJIT to help our students. And this is a project I would like to bring down here. And our kids have to be challenged. This is a new up and coming age. We, we have a kid that is supporting this program from Livingston, 15 years old, who's also helping us out, who's coding, who's teaching these issues. Our kids have a lot of, 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 of learning to do. We have a big community that wants to support. We want to have transparency and open comments on everything. And the other thing, the question that was brought up, if a teacher sends in a question, is, are they going to be rice? I thought the question is what we're trying to address if they're having issues, not whether we have to bring them in, but to answer the question. We need to be working together to get our kids to where we need to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Bedillo. I live at 19 Assateague Road in Howell. At Thurgood Marshall, where I currently teach first grade, I'm curious to know why there are seven preschool classes with only three to six children in each class? Wouldn't it be wise in order to enhance our children's academic and social performance to have lower class sizes in grades K to three? Also, why is it that each kindergarten class no longer has their own paraprofessional? They are now sharing a paraprofessional amongst three classes. As a former kindergarten teacher of 18 years, my students relied heavily on the paraprofessional in order to enhance and reinforce their academic and social skills. I hope for the benefit of the children that you will reconsider full-time paras in each kindergarten class as well as addressing the inequality of class sizes amongst the different grade levels.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Kelly. I live at 38 Diane Drive in Brick, New Jersey. Madam Board President, I'm just, are you aware that you voted on 27 transfers a week and a half before school started? Where staff were moved in positions, they had no training in whatsoever. Hours changed that might have affected because the different schools have different hours. The hours affected childcare or their livelihoods. It also caused disarray. Would you find that acceptable for the children, the teachers? When every district, other district around New Jersey gets their assignment, usually in June before we leave school? We need to learn our craft. A lot of teachers aren't trained in the classes and curriculum they're in now. It's no wonder we don't effectively learn our craft because we get changed so many Just wondering if you know that's educationally sound for the students and staff? I'm just saying this would probably never happen in many other districts, that we get changed so many times in transfers. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Johnson. I live at 33 Peachtree Road in Oakhurst. My concern is lack of substitutes. Like I'm raspy now. Last week I had no voice and I teach kindergarten. I didn't want to call out because I did not want my class of 18 to be split amongst my colleagues the first week of school. We did it, we made it through, but it's so hard to like think about your family, think about things that you have, might have to do that come along and not want to leave your babies in the school with somebody else, having to switch classes, which is not great for COVID resources, reasons either. And just if there's anything that, you know, we're trying to do, I've seen posts about trying to get substitutes and if we have anything going on with that, because it's kind of, you know, you don't really want to take off because you don't want to leave your kids, but sometimes you have to. So I'm just hoping that there'll be some sort of resolution to that. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any more public particip?
Good evening. My name is Michael Zajak. I live at 3 Brookside Street, Farmingdale, New Jersey. I just have a couple of quick questions. Madam Board President, the board has a policy that relates to media consent forms. In the past few weeks, many of my colleagues have told me there have been multiple tweets and posts with students. We were not even into the first week of school, no media consent forms were turned in, et cetera, yet there are pictures all over social media. How can this possibly be allowed when the students have not turned their forms in?
Are there any additional comments or questions? Mr. Hastings, are there any emails?
Yes, Sheila.
Sorry, I know I've been here one time, but can I say something about the parent consent thing? Because I do have a daughter at the high school. We didn't have to see them. I didn't get one and I bet my address is 1984. So there's no mail coming home to the parents from anybody. I had to go to the school in order to get her a report card from somewhere in junior year. So there's no mail coming home to the parents. So instead of putting stuff on the internet, maybe need, course, some has been around for years and years and years and it does work. I get mail every day, but none from, from the district. There's some, something that I really don't want, but the parent said, thank you, just not come home.
We have no additional emails, Mr. Schmidt, and we have no calls.
Okay, public participation is now closed. Madam State Monitor, do you have a report?
I'd just like to, um, report to the board that, uh, we invited the county superintendent, Dr. Richens, uh, into the district last Friday to discuss with him, uh, the distribution and goals that will be associated for the district with the ESAR fund monies that are available and have been assigned to the district. One of the most obvious question becomes immediately whether any of those funds can be used for the plans that we have talked about as a board for Obama and the Obama School. It is his opinion and he indicated that we could use his name. First of all, let me clarify what the ESAR funds have actually have to be used for. These are the three bills, ESAR 1, 2, and 3, that originated in Congress and that were distributed to the states and states in turn made their formulas available to local school districts. Each one of those bills has with it a description of what that money can be used for and conversely, what it can be used for actually. It must be used for COVID-related activities or improvements as that pertains to students. In other words, the central office or an office area would not be eligible at all for any of those funds because it obviously are not, um, they do not include student programs or student attendance. As a result of that, it became clear in talking to Dr. Richens that anything that is done to Obama has to be done through private financing, as we've talked before, or there would have to be some program, student program design that would make the Obama School eligible for some of those funds. Now, obviously, what basically, what that basically means is that if you were going to take one of the floors and assign it to the restoration or improvement and then move central office to that location, if you were to go into the building and replace the heating air filtering system, you wouldn't just replace one floor, you'd replace the system and the floor that you're on would benefit from that. But again, you have to go back to whether or not that building is housing a student program that would make it eligible and be really, that would make it classifiable under the student COVID regulations. He expressed some of the same concerns. He was here the first time Obama School was closed and he is still concerned, as Mr. Anderson expressed on, I think, day one, that we don't know what we're getting into when we start to tear it apart, which makes the actual amount that you want to dedicate or borrow, um, sort of in the air. Because obviously, if you borrow the money and begin the reconstruction of that building and you run into additional problems, for instance, asbestos, uh, you then take your funding that you've applied for and have to address the asbestos issues dollar-wise, then you don't have the rest of the money to, to go through with what you originally wanted to have happen. The board has a very difficult question here and I'm not sure, you know, that there is a clear answer. For those of the audience that aren't certain of exactly what I'm talking about is whether you look for, um, another way of addressing and moving central office so that you are in a building that you own and no longer have to pay rent? Or whether you renovate Obama, which is a very old building and is going to take a great deal of renovation to meet the state codes that will be required? And he was not able to tell us basically, one way or the other, whether the state would give us approval to the Vanna, you know, give us approval to the, you know, that road and start the renovation, or whether we stay where we basically are, which is in a rental situation, wherever we are, and rent. And you really have to sit down and play with the dollars, because the estimates that we've gotten so far with one floor renovation is close to two and a half million dollars, which, if you keep your central office where it is, would be about the same amount of money as if you were to, uh, stay there for another eight to ten years. And at the end of that eight or ten years, you've used that two and a half million dollars that you would have put into Obama, and you still don't have a place to go. So it's a pretty difficult decision. Um, he, the, the end result in his visitation was that he is going to help us try to get someone, because Mr. Hastings has worked all summer to try, with different people, to try and get somebody that will put their signature, or even verbally say to us, yes, this is what Trenton will approve, and this is what they will not approve. So we've been playing a game of avoidance. The staff of Trenton is not, uh, has not been working full fours all summer. Uh, the projects that are on their desk right now probably would fill this room, as our schools are renovating and changing heating and filtering systems and electrical systems and technology programs. So how fast we will move ahead, once we get the direction that we're in, is another question. But he is going to assist us in attempting to, uh, to get somebody with some authority that would be willing, you know, to put this on the line. I, I reported this out tonight to the board, because I do not want the board to think, I mean, we all have our own opinions on this. I think you're not lying. I don't have dog in this fight. Uh, this is really the decision that the board has to make. However, it's not an easy decision, because it involves a lot of money, and you're putting your name to proposing whatever program and direction you go with. And, uh, we want to make sure that it's right. And I know that board members and other members of the staff say to me, why are you going to do something? Why is the board, why is the district going to move on that? It, it's not, as they said, it's not an easy decision, because it's a building that, uh, you have to step back and ask yourself, is it a building that, that we want to take offline, meaning we'll never use it again for students? Or is it a building that can be renovated? It's, it is over a hundred years old. You know the kind of materials over those years that were used in, in building that present problems, even if you had your own home in that situation, you would be looking at the same kind of, of cost and hidden costs that we are really in question about. So we are working on, if the board wants to, uh, appoint a special committee, uh, to work with Voluntarian Mr. Hastings, but Dr. Adams, myself, whoever you would like to be on the committee and explore all of these things. But we just, I, I know we asked you to be patient once again, but until Dr. Richens gets back to us with somebody from Trenton, who can come down from the school authority and say, this is what you can or can't do, uh, we are very hesitant in starting to expend funds and go ahead. And that's the reason, because it's just not clear, it's, it's not like, you know, having, looking at five cracks in the sidewalk and saying, well, now we're going to fix those five cracks. This is a massive, um, renovation. It can't be just picking up the desk and leaving it over there. Nobody allows that anymore. Um, you know, everything has to be handicapped, accessible, it has to be done in the acceptable, approved state way. And I understand the concerns that the board has, that in order to buy something else or go in another direction, and you're adding another building to online, which, which you don't want to do, and I, and I get that, I understand that. But, uh, if you have any questions, I'll gladly answer them for Mr. Hastings or Dr. Adams, and then at the meeting as well, with Dr. Richens.
Madam State Monitor, we do have a, a long meeting.
Pardon me?
We do have a meeting.
Okay, well, I didn't know if you wanted the same one or not, or what?
We do, we do have a.
Anyone?
Any questions or statements? Okay. That's all our reports. Um, at this point, I'm going to be asking for the acceptance, please.
Do we have a motion for A19, A B and C?
Second.
Questions or comments? Mrs. Sussky?
Yes.
Ms. Allen Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Cook? Ms. Girl?
Yes.
I'm just casting.
Sorry, I have to stay.
You're going to stay?
Yes.
Ms. Waller-Rocken?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
And Ms. Setien?
I'm staying.
Thank you, motion taken.
Mrs. Tucker, do you have a question?
Madam President, my tactical consent agenda from B1 through B10?
I'll move it.
Questions, comments?
Any questions or comments?
Ms. Waller-Rocken, B1 through B10, Mrs. Sussky?
Yes.
Ms. Setien?
Uh, yes.
Cast numbers B1, B5, letter O, and B7, number seven.
Thank you. Ms. Allen Anderson?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Cook?
She said yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Girl?
Yes, uh, stay on B4M, as a matter of fact.
Ms. Waller-Rocken?
Yes.
And Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Thank you, motion taken.
Ms. Hastings, would you like to ask for a question?
Thank you, Madam President. Your motion for either C1 number one, or C5 number nine, or succeeding C1, C and D?
Hold it.
Ms. Sussky, second, and Ms. Saunders. Ms. Allen Sussky?
Yes.
Ms. Sussky?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Allen Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Ms. Girl?
Stay.
Hold on, hold again.
Oh, sorry, C. We have to put a conference. Now, that, that stay on, on, um, C2, B and C, and C1.
Thank you, Ms. Waller-Rocken.
Yes.
And Ms. Setien?
Yes.
Motion taken. Thank you.
Uh, can I get a, can I get a motion later?
Second. Excuse me. Oh, yes? No. Oh, never mind. Never mind. Okay. Say my jacket to us, folks, if we need. No.